Good evening. I knew something important was going on there, so I thought I'd wait till the conversation ended. Reverend Smith, the North Las Vegas City Council and Redevelopment Agency welcome you to our meeting this evening. There are four public forums set aside for public comment, one at the beginning and at the end of the Redevelopment Agency meetings, and one at the beginning and the end of the city council meetings. So if you wish to speak, please complete one of the blue cards located on the table outside the main entrance where you came in, or over to my left here on the podium rail. Please give your card to the acting city clerk, she sits right here in front of me. And when we call on you to speak, we request that you limit your comments no more than three minutes, and that we hopefully can avoid repetition. Madam City Clerk, are we in compliance with the open meeting law?
Yes, we are.
Great, so I want to excuse Councilman Black today, he's on a church assignment with the youth in his congregation, and so he won't be here, but we have a special guest tonight. My great friend Pastor Wilton Smith is going to give us our invocation from the Greater Evergreen Missionary Baptist Church. So following that, there will be a pledge of allegiance led by Councilman Churchill. Please rise, Pastor Smith.
Press the button, okay. It was already pressed. Thank you, Mayor, with our heads bowed. Dear wise and loving Father, first thank you, on behalf of all who are gathered here today. Thank you for your manifold and abundant blessings. Thank you for life itself and keeping us, watching over us, blessing us, protecting us. Thank you, Father God, for the measure of health that we need to fulfill our callings and sustenance for our friendships and families. And we thank you for the ability to be involved in the useful work and the honor of bearing responsibilities. Thanks as well, Lord, for the freedom to embrace you and the freedom that we observe in this country. And thank you, Lord, for loving us from your boundless grace. In the Scriptures, Father God, you've said that citizens ought to obey the governing authorities. And since you've established those very authorities to promote peace and order and justice, therefore, I pray for our mayor, the Honorable John Lee, and for the various councilpersons and the levels of city officials, and in particular, for this assembled council. I'm asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern amid the conflicts, interests, and issues of our times. Grant them a sense of the welfare and true needs of our people. Grant them a keen thirst for justice and righteousness and confidence in what is good and fitting. Grant them, Lord, the ability to work together in harmony even when there is honest disagreement. And most of all, grant them personal peace and their lives enjoy in their task. And I pray lastly, Lord, for the agenda set before them today. Please give an assurance of what would please you and what would benefit those who live and work in our grand beloved city of North Las Vegas. We ask these blessings in your most blessed name. In Jesus' name we pray, amen.
Amen.
Please remain standing for our pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councilman Churchill. And Pastor Smith, it's great to have you here, but the best, that special little spiritual wife of yours is a wonderful lady. Let her know she was missed this evening, okay? So thank you very much. Tonight, we have a presentation for the business of the month led by Councilman Goins Brown. And then we're going to have a proclamation, and a proclamation to the members of the North Las Vegas Fire Department led by Councilman Churchill. Councilwoman, let's go downstairs.
As many of you know, when the pandemic hit, we were faced with a tough decision on what to do with our North Las Vegas citizens, our youngest and most vulnerable citizens, and I call them my babies because they are. So in a few short weeks, we had to put together a team to decide that we wanted to make sure that our kids still received good quality education because if a kid was like me, sitting in front of a computer, did not work well. And we wanted to ensure that our students still were able to learn at a rigorous pace and still be successful and just take a little stress off of our employees, some of our first responders, and our citizens. So Born was our micro school, and we called it Snuma for the Southern Nevada Urban Micro Academy. Within that group of leaders, I just wanted to recognize the staff that we could not have done what we did without them. These are the people who work behind the scenes, that don't get a lot of credit for what they did. But they had to wear several hats, I'm sure. You know, we'd show up with the media without notifying the staff over at our rec centers or at the library, and they were just always welcoming for that. And just the many things to get rooms, classrooms ready, to probably open milk cartons, who knows? Open ketchup packets, do whatever was necessary, but they did it. And I didn't hear any complaints, so I'm going to take that as no complaints. So every time I did visit our school, they were always welcoming to me as well. And just, our kids thrive this year. And something I'm extremely proud of, we were able to have the kids a Snuma yearbook so that they can take this memory, and this will last them for a lifetime. And when they're adults, they can look back and see all these little masks face. And I'm just sure that'll be lots of stories that they'll be able to share to their children and their children's children throughout this whole year. So I just want to say thank you to Candy, who's upstairs, that put this yearbook together, and everyone else who helped to put all the pictures together and share the stories for this school year for our Urban Micro Academy. So I would like to recognize some city staff for all of their hard work. First, Cass Palmer, who's our director of our Parks and Leisure Services. Cass, you're a rock star, making sure we had facilities ready and just whatever we asked, you made it happen. So I'd like to share this with you. They all read for your dedication and valuable contribution to Snuma. Your commitment to serving the residents of the city of North Las Vegas is worthy of emulation. So thank you very, very much. Angela Johnson, is she here? And I just want to say thank you for spearheading the staff there, the Safe Key staff, and other people that helped to make our babies successful. Crystal Jackson, where's Crystal? To one of the kindest persons I know. Thank you so much for all the work that you did to help us make sure that our school was running smooth without a hitch every single day. Jasmine Pittman, is Jasmine here? And ditto to Jasmine. Eric Cole, I know I saw Eric. For those day that you said, "Are you guys coming again?" Yes, we came again and again, so thank you for everything that you did in making sure everything was taken care of. Terry Kearns, is Terry here? Is Charles Churchfield here? Yeah, there's Charles. Again, thank you for all that you did to make sure that our school went as successful every single day. We appreciate what you did. Frida Banks. Jeremy. Is it Jammy? I don't want to say it wrong, Jamie. Thank you, Jeremy, for always making sure that we are ready to go every single day. All right. And so I consider this a business because we are serving the public, so thank you again. And I can't express my truest gratitude for all of you for making this year a success. And we're going to continue this, just saying. Just so you know, Don and Ashley wanted me to also say thank you from them as well. They helped me put this little list together, so surprise.
Hello? It's on. I have a tendency not to talk loud, so I definitely need a microphone. Well, this is a very special council meeting. They're all pretty special, but this one's maybe a little extra special. We're here to say thank you to our firefighters who were involved in the saving of little Malaya just recently, a few months, about a month or so ago. And I have some notes I made over here, so just let me read them, and then we'll do the proclamations. And we'll have our firefighters come down. Back in March, our firefighters got called to one of the worst scenarios imaginable, a child trapped in a burning building. When the first crew arrived, without hesitation, they rushed into the building to search for little Malaya. Six minutes later, after crawling through the thick smoke, they found Malaya unresponsive in the back room. They brought her outside, revived her, and took her to UMC where she was put on a ventilator and eventually made a full recovery, thank God. Working together, they knocked back the flames enough to make a rescue, revived little Malaya, and get her to the hospital in just 21 minutes. Now, I remember Chief Calhoun mentioning that, that's totally amazing. After being dispatched from their station. I firmly believe that quick actions kept this horrible fire from becoming an absolute tragedy. Things can be replaced, but of course, people can't, especially a very, very young girl like that. This is a perfect example of what it means to be a first responder. And I could not be more proud, we cannot be more proud, of these men for their actions in the face of danger, and most importantly, for saving Malaya's life. I can honestly tell you that working closely with our firefighters and our staff here, I'm not going to say that this wasn't a surprise, but in reality, I knew to expect nothing less. It was just recently that my wife and I had the opportunity to go to Station 52 where we had some new firefighters coming onboard. That same afternoon, they all came down here to get pinned. But we watched how the training was actually done in real life. And then when we came over here for the pinning, we saw a video exactly what these men go through. So when I say that, it wasn't a surprise, just by seeing the training that you all go through. You know, job well done and very much appreciated. So let me move on, and we'll have our firefighters come down, and we'll do this, and we'll get on with business. May we have Captain Gary Polk come on down? I can't feel it, look at that guy, come on down. Engineer Joshua Hammond. Hammond. Firefighter paramedic Jordan Spears. Firefighter paramedic David Zimmerman. Firefighter Cole Halliday. Firefighter Spencer McBride. Okay, and firefighter Ryan Simone. I recognize that name. Usually I put a Frank in front of it. I'll read the whereas, and then we'll get on. Very similar to what I just read, so I apologize to some of you. Whereas on March 20th, at around 8:25 in the morning, North Las Vegas Fire Department responded to a call about a two-story condo catching fire near North 5th and Cary Avenue. And whereas firefighters arrived within five minutes from the call, or at 8:30 a.m., and with little to no visibility, crawled through the smoke and located the five-year-old girl. And whereas, the girl who was unconscious and not breathing was quickly pulled out of the building, the firefighters were able to revive the girl before they took her to University Medical Center of Las Vegas for treatment. And whereas, because of their heroic acts of our North Las Vegas firefighters, a precious young life was saved. Now, therefore, we, the city council of the city of North Las Vegas, do hereby recognize and honor all of these gentlemen that came here right now and encourage, truly encourage, our citizens to join us in expressing their appreciation to our very own North Las Vegas firefighters. Witness thereof, we have set our hand and cause the seal of the city of North Las Vegas to be affixed this second date of June 2021. And of course, that'll be Mayor John Lee, Mayor Pro Tem Isaac Barone, Councilwoman Goins Brown, Councilman Black, who's not here tonight, and of course, myself. Thank you all. Thank you.
Thank you very much, wonderful, Richard, you take the time and to be able to do that. Before we get going, I want to mention we have two luminaries in the audience, and if they would stand for us. Senator Pat Spearman, who just came down from the state legislature, I think, yesterday. She's here today, appreciate having you. She represents North Las Vegas. And retired County Commissioner, City Councilman Lawrence Weekly. Lawrence, would you stand there? Thank you so much, many, many years of service in this room right now. So we're going to move on to council items, Councilwoman Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll just keep it brief with a couple here. Please look out, we are tentatively opening up Harkey Park from the extensive rebuild right around July 1st or so, and when we close there, we'll actually get you some more information. And I'll be out there hosting the party there, and I'll take out the big al-panche, and we'll make some tacos along with that. And, you know, Mayor, yesterday, we had our graduation for Rancho High School. And so I just wanted to give a shout out to all of our graduates. If they, they're probably not listening, they're probably already taken off, right? But, you know, for all of our North Las Vegas high schools, Mojave, Legacy, Canyon Springs, Cheyenne, and of course Rancho, it's a proud moment for them, they made it, they got through the zombie apocalypse, I mean, the COVID apocalypse here. And as the old motto that we always said at Rancho High School, Mayor, the best is yet to come. So for them, folks, congratulations for you, the best yet to come. Thank you, Mayor.
Councilman Churchill.
Thank you, Mayor. Just have a couple of items that I'd like to speak about here. Myself, Mayor Lee, and Councilman Scott Black had an opportunity to go to the groundbreaking for Juan's Flaming Fajitas just recently, which is going to be located on the corner of Aliante Parkway and Centennial. I believe it's the northeast corner. I could tell you that that whole corner is developing very nicely. And for the people who haven't had an opportunity to go to Juan's Flaming Fajita, it's going to be a pleasant surprise for you. So we're hoping that they get going. I think the mayor told them that they have to get up and running by, I think it was December of this year. So, you know, I think they're out there shoveling right now to try to abide by his request. So that was just another example of the type of businesses that we're bringing here to North Las Vegas. It just happens to be in Ward 4, so, I mean, I won't mention it though. The other thing I do want to mention, I had the opportunity to go to the Riders of the Storm, not the Riders, but the Riders of the Storm, at the VA Hospital the other day. And I didn't know that this group existed. And it was a group of veterans who were both, some were in the hospital at the time and others were not. But they gather together once a year to read poetry. And this time, they did it in the atrium area between all of the buildings. It's like a little garden area over there, very quiet, grassy area. And there must have been about 40 or 45 people there, most of which were these veterans. And what struck me the most when I walked into that area, coming out of the building, with everything that's been going on with COVID this past year, like a hurricane, you know, something that we've all been through. But I got the sense of this calmness, like being in the eye of a hurricane when I walked out into this atrium area. And people were just quiet there, and there was just a sense of calmness amongst everybody there. And one by one, each of them got up and had a little story to tell in a poem that they wrote themselves. And it was very moving. And the therapy behind that with all of these people, that they were very honest in what they were saying, they were expressing their feelings and what they've gone through in poetry. It was something that I very much appreciated going to. So, you know, if we have any veterans out there that would like to become part of this Riders of the Storm, the gentleman's name is Julius Nicholson, and I'd be more than happy to share contact information with him for you. But if you ever have an opportunity, whether you want to join the group or not, just to go and listen, to hear the stories and what these men and women have gone through over the years, it's very moving. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you very much, good report. Councilwoman Goins Brown.
Thank you, Mayor. Last night, I was invited to a great community resource that will greatly benefit our Hispanic community. It's called Centro Hispanio, and it's on Pecos, closest to Owens. And I know we share a large Hispanic population, on both sides of the Las Vegas and North Las Vegas boundaries. And at Centro Hispanio, what you can do, they offer English classes, finding a job, they help with community resources, family history, immigration, and spiritual growth. And they also have a course that just helps with emotional stability because it's a scary feeling if, you know, you come to a country, or you don't speak English, and you don't know what's going on, and you don't know what the process. And so they have classes there, and they have five other locations throughout the valley. And I think they're going to branch out into Henderson as well. So it was a really great experience for me last night, and I learned a lot. Also, on Saturday, last Saturday, I attended Ty's Place. It was the first annual color walk, color run. And this was just a time to celebrate former Assemblyman Tyrone Thompson and just to keep his legacy and his memory alive. And they are planning this to be an annual event every year around this time. So kudos to that organization. And then I'm not going to say too much about this, because I know we're going to talk about it in a minute, but I'm inviting you all to join me tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. right here on our city hall lawn to honor Juneteenth. And it's a little-known holiday that I dare say a lot of people don't know about, no fault of their own. It's just, it's a southern, I learned about it because I went to an HBCU in the state of Texas. And it's just celebrating that slaves found out that they were free in 1863. However, news didn't get to Galveston, Texas until two years later. And so, as you can imagine, everything is big in Texas, and so there's a huge celebration in Texas every year. And it's just not on June 19th, it actually starts June 1st and goes through the whole month of June. So we're going to have a flag-raising ceremony here in the morning at 9:00, so I invite you all to attend.
Thank you very much. Just concerning Richard's report about Juan's Flaming Fajita, we've got, I counted, 14 new restaurants being built in North Las Vegas right now, in one form or another development. So we are really bringing some opportunities to stay in North Las Vegas and enjoy eating here. But good reports, moving on to the agenda.
Approve city council regular meeting agenda of June 2nd, 2021 for possible action. Mayor and council staff requests that items number 21 and 22 be continued to June 16th, 2021. Additionally, at the request of the applicant, items numbers 17 and 18 will be continued two weeks until June 16th. With those changes, staff recommends approval of the agenda as amended.
Okay, I want to make a statement real quick on item 17 and 18. And this doesn't sit well with me. I know for a fact that this has already been continued in the last meeting, and there has been a horrible amount of time spent on this. And I don't know if the seller's property is a bad actor, or what he's doing, wasting our time and wasting the residents' time. So Mr. Groenauer, could you come down here for a second? Councilman Churchill, did you want to say something on that?
Yes, Mayor, while Bob is coming down here. You know, when we put these items on the agenda for people to know and attend the meetings, and then at the last moment, the owners of the property decide to pull it for whatever selfish reasons that they may have, it puts us all in a bad light with our community. Naturally, residents believe that we're manipulating the agenda, which we're not. And we really don't need this happening in our city. This is one of the reasons why this council has paid a lot of attention to the businesses coming here. And what we want is something good for our community. So I myself, and I'm sure my colleagues over here, feel the same way, that this can't continue. Thank you, Mayor.
So Mr. Groenauer, just for a second here, I understand you represent somebody who would like to buy a particular piece of property, and they continue to get right up to the estimate, and they pull it out. Maybe they think the residents want to discuss it, maybe they think that they want to get more. But eventually, you know, after serving in the legislature like I did, we didn't have enough time to goof around with this kind of stuff. We only had 120 days, and we went to work. I guess, can you give us an update on what's going on with this, so the residents at home and the audience can hear what's going on?
Yes, Your Honor, members of the council, for the record, Bob Groenauer, 1980 Festival Plaza Drive. I'm here representing D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton, as you know, is a master developer for Valley Vista. This item that's on the agenda is a 20-acre piece of property. The property owners would be, you know, Frank has been a problem for the master developers since the conception of 2006, since the beginning, 2006, 2007, with the master plan community. This is a 20-acre piece of property that's outside of Valley Vista. We, D.R. Horton, is trying to purchase the property to eliminate all the problems that has been caused. They have not participated in SIDs, they've refused to participate in any type of improvements within the master plan community. This will be a win-win situation if we're able to purchase this property. The reason why I'm not able to move forward tonight, and I apologize, I was driving down here up until 20:04 before I was told by legal counsel, by D.R. Horton, they don't do that, by D.R. Horton. D.R. Horton tonight does not have the legal authority to move forward with the application because, as you know, and your city attorney will tell you, the property owner controls the application. And there is an issue there, and I'll just put this out on the record. The issue by the property owner is they don't want D.R. Horton to get these entitlements and not close on the property. And if they close on the property, then the property owner now does not have the entitlements, and now they have to be inside the Valley Vista, and they don't want to be a part of Valley Vista. So there are some negotiations that are going on. There is a $2.4 million contribution that is at stake for Valley Vista, for police, for parks, for fire, and so on. And this council is very much aware of that contribution that this property owns. So we can eliminate all that if D.R. Horton is able to purchase the property. So there is some internal stuff that needs to be verified and approved before we can move forward. But as I mentioned to you prior to, they know it's on the record that next, in two weeks, we're going one way. Either we're going to weeks, we're going one way, either we're going to withdraw it and that property will stay there vacant until whenever, or we're able to move forward and D.R. Horton's intent is to purchase it. And that's the game plan.
Thank you. So do you believe in two weeks, you can solve this problem? This 20 acres doesn't make a difference to us. I'm just letting you know. I mean, it's, we've got a lot of things to do in North Las Vegas, 20 acres is 20 acres. We've got other 20 acres we can do. Give me your idea about what you expect in the next two weeks.
I'm hoping sooner than the next two weeks that we have the deal that's worked out. I, I don't want to put on the record what the understanding, the deal point is, but if this deal point is approved by the property owner, we're moving forward with this application. D.R. Horton will then subsequently close with the entitlements, and we move forward. If not, we're not going to move forward, we'll just withdraw the application, or I'll have the property owner here stand before you and let them deal with it, and D.R. Horton will pull out. So the last day of whatever we're dealing with will be June 16th. And we're, this is either going to get on, or it's not going to get on, and if they want to do this again, they could restart the process. Because I do not want to put you in this position. More importantly, I don't want to put the neighbors in a position, because this is not fun for me to stand up here before you and, and make these type of comments. But this is a position that I'm in. About an hour ago, I was ready to rock and roll. I was in my game mode to get this thing on, but things changed, and this is why I'm here now.
Okay, so what we're probably going to do is amend this agenda and approve it, pulling off item number 17 and 18. And you're going to leave here today and say, we got two weeks. We're not dealing with people that want to just waste our time, waste our residents' time, you know what I mean?
I got it.
So let's get it done in two weeks, and if not, let's, let's just walk away.
We'll do it.
All right? That'd be okay?
Yep.
Did anybody else want to comment on anything with that there? No, I sure appreciate it.
May I leave?
Yes, sir. I just wanted the residents and the council and everybody to know that you, you're committed to solving this problem or walking from it. And when you walk from it, we're going to kind of push back from it too.
I'm good to go. Thank you.
Thank you. And while you're walking back there, Bob, you can wave to my great friend, Assemblyman Harvey Mumford, who just came in. Harvey, welcome here. It was hard to see you when you walked in. You're getting a little bit taller here, it seems like, every time I look at you, you look a little taller, but we sure love you. So we're going to call on a motion to approve the agenda as amended.
Motion to approve as amended?
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to council business, item number two. Pass and adopt resolution choose, oh, pardon me, Madam City Clerk, or City Manager, whoever's reading it tonight.
No problem.
We have two new ladies here today. I don't know how you're coordinating. Okay.
Item two, pass and adopt resolution number 2665, commemoration of Juneteenth, June 19th, as an annual celebration of freedom of African-Americans from slavery.
Thank you very much. And I know that Chief of Staff Gibson is ready for this, so please come up. And then, as you bring up the rest of you, the organization, we'd appreciate the presentation.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. For the record, Rebecca Gibson, Chief of Staff. I'm joined here today by Mr. Lawrence Weekly. Thank you so much for being here with us this evening. And it is a privilege to stand before you tonight as you consider the passage and adoption of resolution 2665, which commemorates Juneteenth, June 19th, as an annual celebration of freedom of African-Americans from slavery. Mr. Weekly will read the resolution into the record and provide remarks. We will then be joined by Senator Spearman, thank you for being here tonight, Senator, who will provide remarks. And I will read a letter of support that was provided by Assemblywoman Thomas of District 17 in the city of North Las Vegas. I would like to take this time to thank Ms. Deborah Evans and also Dr. Al Gourier of the National Local Juneteenth Observance Foundation for their guidance as we participate as a municipality in Juneteenth celebrations this year. For those in attendance in council chambers, and for those that are listening in the audience, we will have a Juneteenth flag-raising ceremony, as mentioned by Councilwoman Goins Brown. Tomorrow morning at 9:00 a.m. here at North Las Vegas City Hall in front of the flagpoles, we'd be elated if you would be able to join us for that celebration. I will now turn the time over to Mr. Weekly, who will read the resolution into the, into the record and provide remarks.
Thank you so much, Ms. Gibson. First of all, let me begin by thanking you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, and your staff and team for inviting me to be here today. You know, it's a, it's a, it's a great day here in the great city of North Las Vegas, and we're so very pleased that you all would take the opportunity to have this resolution here on your agenda today. You know, as Councilwoman Goins Brown pointed out, this is a huge celebration all across the nation. You know, I, like the councilwoman here, had an opportunity to attend an HBCU as well down in Louisiana. And when you look for this rich and pure history here on, on the West, you know, it's, it's far and in between. And we're so very grateful to have people like Ms. D. Evans, who's in the audience here, and of course, one of our longtime former educators. Well, we have two educators that's been recognized, but former Assemblyman Harvey Mumford, who played such an instrumental role, Mayor, in so many of our lives in terms of education, teaching history and math, and ensuring that our kids would be empowered in education. And of course, I'm not sure if you know, but Dr. Al Gourier, who spent years as a principal here in, in the city of North Las Vegas, educated so many young people as well. I know that my friend, Jared Luke, invited me to come down today along with our, our city manager, Ryan Juden, I call him Dr. J. Dr. J invited me down as well, and I appreciate that. And they asked me to read this resolution into the record. And I just want to say to Ms. Gibson, you know, when you ask me to read something like this into the resolution, into the record, you need to make the font a little bit bigger. And so what I'd like to do is, if y'all don't mind, because I think, Mayor, this is so important, right? I've had an opportunity, I've been so blessed to sit on that side of the fence with you all for years, and now I get an opportunity to be on this side of the fence and breathe a lot easier. How about that? And, and see that life is so much more grander on this side of the fence. But I've never been big on speaking points. But I want to, I'd be so remiss if y'all don't mind.
Yes, sir.
I'd love to invite Dr. Al Gourier to please join me here. Because I know that when we look at this, this history, it's extremely sensitive, it's extremely important, and this is something that, you have to feel it to understand those men and women who were given this country that free labor. Can you imagine going to a job every single day, not realizing you really should have been paid to do it, but you weren't? All the sacrifices and so many children whose lives were on the line as well. But Dr. Gourier, if you'd please, just come and just take a moment, if you will, and I, I just want to paraphrase, if you will, but just if you would give the mayor and the council just a brief overview of Juneteenth and why we celebrate Juneteenth, please.
Thank you very much. Greetings, Mayor and Councilmen. I'm Dr. Al Gourier, and I came here 32 years ago, and I received the same gracious greetings from the mayor who sat in these chambers. And he helped me convert a failing elementary school in this community to a shining place of glory. I came to Lewis Craig Elementary School in 1989. And with the help of the mayor, the city council, the Chamber of Commerce, the businesses of this community, and the citizens, we converted Lewis Craig Elementary School into an elementary school. Enough about that. I'm a teacher. I've been a teacher all of my close to fourscore years. And the only thing I regret is that I did not, even though I was a graduate also of a historical black college. That historical black college did not teach me what I needed to know about myself. And I'm ashamed to say that as a principal, I did not do all that I could to help students learn as much about themselves and their history and their culture, to help them be the strong, dynamic leaders that they have the potential of being. They were the victims of what I call the Eurocentric system of education, that has systematically denied our youngsters the right of being exposed to the history, the culture, and the contributions, and the truth that Africans and African-Americans have made to the development of this country and to this world. Brother Weekly here says that he would like for me to share with you our story of Juneteenth. It is a very simple and significant story. He is right. African slaves were the economic engine that built this powerful country that we now live in. And the day will come soon when America will truly come to its senses and realize that the economic investment that we have made in this country will pay dividends. It may be called whatever, reparations or whatever, but our day will come. And today, we thank you for recognizing a very significant and important part of our service to this country. June 19th was just one day in our story, but it's significant that you, as a city council, just as 32 years ago, this organization took effort in supporting me to make changes in the Clark County School District. I applaud your effort in recognizing our celebration today. Juneteenth is the celebration and recognition of the African-American people of your community who have made significant contributions to build this community and to elect you as its mayor and council members. So I thank you. I have a, a partner in this effort who is the president of Juneteenth Nevada, and she will come later and share with you some of the many events. We have 15 events scheduled from now until June 19th, when we celebrate Juneteenth. We hope you will join us and participate. I have a little flyer I'd like to share with everyone who is here present, so that they can get an idea of some of the activities that we're incorporating into this community to celebrate Juneteenth. And Commissioner Weekly, thank you very much for sharing.
Thank you. And so with that being said, Mayor, we'd say, whereas Juneteenth National Freedom Day, along with the Fourth of July Independence Day, completes the cycle of freedom for America's Independence Day Observation, or Observances, if you will. Whereas the city of North Las Vegas commemorates the emancipation of enslaved African-Americans and highlight the history, culture, and communities, countless contributions they have and continue to have on the fabric of America. With that being said, Mayor and Council, we thank you so much for resolution number 2665. And we thank you and the entire family of the city of North Las Vegas, and of course, our wonderful councilwoman, we thank you for continuing to keep the dream alive and continuing this celebration and making sure that we all recognize this rich and pure history. Thank you so much for having me. Thank you.
Senator Spearman, please arise and give us your idea.
I guess I'm the third person to speak today that says I too graduated from an HBCU, Norfolk State University in Norfolk, Virginia. It's where I got my commission into the U.S. Army Military Police Corps. Had an opportunity at that time to also pledge into a sorority, Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority Incorporated. And that might ring a bell, because our vice president is also a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha. But the significance of what I'm about to say is the fact that all of the black, Greek fraternities and sororities have been such a great part of the history of this country. Some may not know that Dr. Martin Luther King himself was an Alpha Phi Alpha man, and Coretta Scott King was a member of Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, so many others. I'm glad to report to you all also that we have now, as a result of a vote that was taken on Monday, the state of Nevada will recognize the Divine Nine with a license plate depicting all of our symbols. And I think that that's a marvelous step forward, and it could not have happened without people like Commissioner Weekly and so many others who came to testify about the significance. For the record, I'm Senator Pat Spearman. I represent Nevada Senate District 1 in North Las Vegas, and I want to express my support for resolution 2665, the commemoration of Juneteenth or June 19th as an annual celebration of freedom of African-Americans from slavery. Publicly recognizing this historic date provides us with an opportunity to not only reflect on the significance of June 19th in abolishing slavery in the United States, but also to mark the incredible contributions of African-Americans who have made so many things great in the state of Nevada. While the day is remembered as the end of a long and very sad chapter in our national history, it is also a painful reminder that the black, indigenous, and other persons of color, the BIPOC community, continued to face decades of inequality and injustice in America. Even today, we must stand vigilant against such past prejudices in our operations of business, government, and our daily life. In 2011, Nevada added Juneteenth to the list of holidays and periods of observance in Chapter 236 of the Nevada Revised Statutes. It is our solemn duty to call upon the news media, educators, business leaders, and government officials to increase the awareness of Nevadans to the historical significance of the day when the last slaves in the U.S. were emancipated. Today, Juneteenth is celebrated all across the country to bring all Americans together to celebrate our common bond of freedom. Freedom through the recognition of service and education and historic preservation of Juneteenth in America. This is a time of hope. This is a time of hope. As we embrace the ideal that America's strength as a nation lies within the differences of her people and rising above the obstacles to succeed, we celebrate Juneteenth. And I want to offer a heartfelt thanks to this council and to all of the staff and all of the citizens of North Las Vegas, because we are much stronger together, remembering that God made all of us, and God's deepest desire is that we not just get along, but that we live together in unity. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Ms. Goins Brown? Is this your last speaker?
Yes, Mayor. I wanted to read into the record the letter that was received from Assemblywoman Thomas.
Yes.
It is an honor to join with the city of North Las Vegas in celebration of Juneteenth. As I look back on history, particularly January 1st, 1863, and the issuance of the Emancipation Proclamation by President Abraham Lincoln, I imagine that this must have been a joyous time for so many of our ancestors. But as history has noted, this was not the case for over an additional 250,000 slaves who were not yet free. For those slaves that lived under slave owners that resided in Confederate states and who transported our ancestors to Texas, it would take an additional two and a half years before the issuance to the state of Texas. General Order Number 3, "The people of Texas are informed that, in accordance with the proclamation from the Executive of the United States, all slaves are free." Thus joyously, on June 19th, 1865, freedom came for all of our ancestors. Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. famously said, "No one is free until we are all free." What a tribute to be able to celebrate together every year in memory of the freedom that finally came to our captive enslaved ancestors. Assemblywoman Clara Thomas, District 17, City of North Las Vegas. With that, Mayor and Council, I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight and for your consideration on the passage and adoption of resolution number 265. Thank you.
Please express to Clara how much we appreciate the letter, but it'd been nice to see her if we had a chance. She's a wonderful representative. Miss Goins, I've got, before I go there, I've got two people, I just got two blue cards. Ms. Brandy Hairston, is you here? Is there Ms. Brandy? Please come forward. And then after her will be Deborah Evans. Welcome.
Hi. Hello, everyone, and thank you for this opportunity to speak on this very important commemoration that's going on today. that's going on today. I want to give my utmost support for Resolution 2665. And because of the lingering effects of slavery, I'd like to read some things that the city could think about and move on for our future. So slavery had lingering effects for the descendants of slaves. The City of North Las Vegas could implement plans for the United States descendants of slavery to fully participate in economic and civic life by decreasing racial disparities that result from economic exclusion. It's important that our city take steps for the descendant of slavery community because slavery, Jim Crow, stolen money, redlining, stolen land, peonage, massacres that killed entire families and destroyed black businesses such as the Tulsa, Oklahoma that we're celebrating right now, the 100th Year Commemoration. It also destroyed those businesses, land. Then we move on to mass incarceration and ongoing terror of the descendants of slavery. It also led to limited economic opportunities for the descendants of slavery and the overall deprivation of life for these descendants. As well as today, we're looking at a gigantic wealth gap with descendants of slaves being about 13 or so percent of the United States and only owning about 2% of $2 trillion of wealth, and the rest is about 90 something percent, 90 trillion in wealth. So that's a huge wealth gap that we're looking at today. So we're also 50% of the homeless in the United States. Then we have only about 2% of the descendants of slaves graduating from our very important HBCUs with medical program degrees. Furthermore, the African American community in North Las Vegas has the highest unemployment rate, the lowest home ownership rate, and also the lowest math proficiency by eighth grade. And those are statistics for our beautiful city of North Las Vegas. So I and other community members ask that the City of North Las Vegas see that the funds given to the state are allocated to address these issues that are specific to the descendant of slavery community. And I have the utmost faith in our city council that they can get this done. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Deborah, Deborah Evans? Welcome, Ms. Evans.
Good evening, and thank you. First of all, I'd like to bring Assemblyman Harvey Mumford up. He is the one who introduced AB 174, which gave us the bill in Nevada. Mr. Mumford? I want to make sure he gets the recognition because if it hadn't been for him, I would not have made that trip to Carson City to pick up the bill in 2011.
Well, you know, you're bringing a ringer in. I love this guy.
He's the godfather of here in Nevada.
He is, no doubt. He is my friend. Welcome, Harvey. She'd like you to say a few words to us. We'd love to hear from you.
In the meantime, can I just say, as the vice chair and the director of communications for the national organization, as well as the president of the Juneteenth Nevada, I want to thank you for your support. I want to thank you for the resolution. And Ms. Goins-Brown, I appreciate everything you've done for us. You have been in our corner from the beginning, and I do want to acknowledge your help, as well as Commissioner Weekly, who signs my bill every year, every year in my proclamation. I believe in giving props while you're alive and give your flowers while you can appreciate it. Thank you for everything.
Well spoken. Mr. Mumford, councillor, assemblyman, I might say.
Okay. I just want to extend my appreciation to Deborah Evans. And she came to Carson City, you know, in 2011, and we produced the bill that established Juneteenth in the state of Nevada. And, you know, I, you know, I congratulate to Deborah Evans, you know, and she's great. She's great, you know.
Thank you, my friend. Appreciate you, and seeing you is a joy to me today.
Okay.
We had many good years together.
Oh, God, yes. God, yes. And Aaron and Sir. Oh, yeah.
Thank you, and welcome. I have one more person. I think it's Stephen. Stephen, is that the name? I'm not spelling it properly, but you live on Civic Center?
I live in Civic Center.
Oh. Oh, Mr. Washington, I didn't stand. Oh, okay. Come, come, friend.
Thank you, Your Honor. I basically planned to come speak on public comment, but since this item here is so relevant, I get an opportunity to go ahead and speak on that. I see all my good friends are here. Mr. Weekly, I haven't seen in ages. I plan on talking to him after it's over and some other folks. But right now, I certainly want to go ahead and commend the city for this action here. It couldn't be more needed. I also want to go ahead and talk about the inequality and equity that is the order of today. I am reaching out to Mr. Michael Milken. I think people know that name, Mr. Robert Smith, because right now, on the latest video interview, Mr. Milken has put out a national call to close the equity gap, which right now, these calls are $20 billion over the next 10 years, basically 2% from the Fortune 1000 companies over 10 years to address that. That's been my thing since I was released from prison in 1993, continues to be my thing, capital formation. I leave the politics to others, capital formation. That's what this country is all about, the vote and the capital. So as we go ahead and move forward on that, as we speak, in communication with folks at the Raider Stadium, some other folks about raising some capital to go along with these things, these issues that we're talking about, even including the program Ms. Goins has put on the table there. I was watching the 75th Anniversary video that she basically described, and quite frankly, I don't know why Las Vegas doesn't have the biggest celebration in the world, I mean, North Las Vegas, for its 75th birthday. It has one little story to go ahead and tell. That's part of what I'm trying to incorporate down in my doing. So hopefully, I'll have something positive to go ahead and report relative to June 19th as well. But before our closing, I want to go ahead and congratulate you on your conversion to the Republican Party. You can certainly expect me to go ahead and be there with you, starting today, moving forward. I don't like the conditions that are going on up there. Secondly, Ms. Goins, I certainly plan on being here tomorrow as I wanted to go ahead and have more discussion with you about advancing the capital agenda to take advantage of what is going on.
Thank you, Stan. I appreciate you. I'm going to have you finish, but I'd like to say something. You know, the North Las Vegas City Council understands that most of the people in North Las Vegas make the same kind of money, you know, when they have a job and stuff. And we were so tied into gaming, tourism, hospitality for so many years. We were just a bedroom community to whoever was out there, and we'd go out there and work. We're no longer a bedroom community to anybody here. We've built our own employment opportunities in North Las Vegas. We, right now, are diversifying not only the incomes of Southern Nevada and the people that live in North Las Vegas, but we're trying to diversify the incomes of the people in North Las Vegas now, which means as next time, when 9/11 happened and that airplane hit that building, that was, I had no idea what effect that would have on Las Vegas. I mean, airplanes didn't fly here for 30 days. We all lost, a lot of us lost our houses. We couldn't make our water payments. It was just devastating. And so as Mayor, I looked at that and realized that the number two form of savings in America right now is equity in your home. And if we could do things that would preserve equity in the home, and keep these families together, and keep people in a home, we would be doing great things for this community. But what it meant would be, we would have to supply more jobs in North Las Vegas than anybody else. So I don't know whether you know it or not, but North Las Vegas gets up every day competing. We compete against Henderson, Las Vegas, Clark County, Boulder City, Mesquite. This business coming to town is going to go somewhere, and we want to show them our best side. Now, if they choose another local government to go to, we're fine with that because it's new money into the community, it's new opportunities. But when they do decide to come to North Las Vegas, we want to make sure we give them the fastest service possible. And our goal is to see if we can figure out, if I worked at Caesar's Palace in maintenance and my wife worked next door to Treasure Island dealing cards, we're still in gaming tourism hospitality, and when the next event happens like this pandemic, we both lose our jobs again. We both get laid off. We both start over that cycle of losing our home and trying to get another home. So my goal and the city council's goal has always been, let's offer the jobs in North Las Vegas that we can take, maybe she stays at Caesar's Palace dealing cards, and, or you do, it doesn't matter, but if we can get the other spouse to go over here and work in something within North Las Vegas where we're manufacturing, we're building, we're growing an infrastructure here, that if something negative does happen, we've saved that family a little bit of distress that they used to get 100% of distress. So our goal in North Las Vegas has always been to take care of our residents in North Las Vegas. We don't care if everybody in this valley works in North Las Vegas, it's fine with us. But the goal of us, who have all grown up pretty much except for Richard, and he's been here for years, is to make sure we strengthen the families of North Las Vegas, and we are doing that today. We've got a lot of jobs coming to North Las Vegas, a lot of very, very good jobs coming. We have got to figure out how to get a labor force into this area. I've talked to the city manager today. We might start our own employment agency in North Las Vegas next, and letting people in North Las Vegas know, these jobs are here. Come see these jobs. Go out and apply for these jobs. Maybe tourism is fun, but it's not going to be long lasting and strengthening to your family. The other side of this is, the gaming industry, the hotels and that are going to find a really challenge in the future because our residents are going to work in these jobs here that pay more money. They're going to be in their community. They're going to have to start paying more money on the strip to keep people because we're driving up wages in North Las Vegas for our residents. So we're very proud of the infrastructure we put in place. We're very proud of the companies that we brought here. We're very proud of the opportunity and the restaurants and all the success we're doing. But ultimately, it is to see that the residents of North Las Vegas benefit from this city council and from the corporate boundaries of North Las Vegas. We can do more, we will do more. But as we go now, in the last seven years, we've done a lot, and we're very proud of it, and we're looking forward to actually answering more of the needs in the community now that we're getting these jobs. So Ms. Goins-Brown, that was my couple of seconds here, but I wanted you to finish up on, but we did hear some Stan and some other people, issues about disparity. We're trying to fix that.
I received a message via Facebook, which I thought was just interesting and just kind of fit right in place here. And first of all, just thank you to all of those who are involved in making our program tomorrow a huge success. I don't want to name names because I know I'm going to forget somebody. And thank you to the Juneteenth Committee for undertaking this. Assemblyman Mumford, thank you as well for your bill. Without you, we wouldn't be where we are today. And today, just Juneteenth is just, has grown so much in popularity. It's growing from South Korea, Japan, Africa, Central America, and Canada. So it's just a global, worldwide known holiday, and some states, I understand, will make it a paid holiday. And so that's huge. But this gentleman, his name is Omar Lee, and he wrote this poem, and he said, "I'm from Washington, D.C. I'm a syndicated writer that loves to inspire people with my poetry." And his poem is entitled "Words From Freed Slaves." So just imagine this is you, it's 1865. "We all believe in freedom. We all believe in love. We all believe in blessings that come from above. We don't believe in hatred. In fact, we don't believe in pain, but prayer seems to always make bad things change. We always had hope for a better day. We always had dreams of leaving our plantation and going far, far away. And now, we can say, 'Free at last. No more hurt and pain from the past.'" It was written by Omar Rashad Lee. Hopefully, one day, our curriculums will be updated so that we can teach more of the actual history that's taken place in our country. And I hope to see you all tomorrow morning at 9:00. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Well spoken. We're going to close the public hearing, and Ms. Goins-Brown, we're going to call for motion to pass and adopt Resolution Number 2665. That would be your motion.
Move to approve.
We have a motion. Please cast your vote. Items unanimously passed. Thank you very much. Now, we're going to go on to redevelopment meeting, which is very boring per minute, so all you presenters for the Juneteenth, if you'd like to leave now, it'd be a great time because it's going to be a lot of boring stuff after this.
Approve redevelopment regular meeting agenda of June 2nd, 2021, for possible action. Oh, I'm sorry. It's the public forum, councilman.
Well, I'm going to move it on to Councilman Barone now, sir.
All right. Well, I'll go ahead and open up the RDA public forum. Moving on to redevelopment agency first public forum, now the time to speak on any posted redevelopment agency agenda items. Do we have anybody, Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers? None? Okay. Let's go ahead and move on to the RDA agenda then.
Councilman, approve redevelopment regular meeting agenda of June 2nd, 2021, for possible action. Chairman Barone, agency members, staff recommends approval of the redevelopment agency agenda as published.
Can I get a call to approve the RDA agenda?
Make a motion to approve.
Motion passes. Let's go, move on to the redevelopment agency consent agenda.
Chairman Barone and agency members, the redevelopment agency consent agenda consists of two items. Staff recommends approval of the RDA consent agenda as published.
May I have a motion to approve the redevelopment agency consent agenda?
Move to approve consent.
Okay, that moves, that passes as well. Let's go ahead and go on to the second RDA public forum. Madam City Clerk, do we have any written comments or callers for this?
No, we don't, Chair.
Okay, well, in that case, I'm going to go ahead and close the public forum, and I'm going to adjourn this meeting of the redevelopment agency, and let's go back to the regular city council meeting and back to Mayor Lee.
Thank you. That was very quick. Moving on to the first council public forum, this is time set aside for comment on posted agenda items, excluding public hearings which be heard separately. So if you want to speak on any item listed on the consent agenda or business, now is that time. Madam City Clerk, I have a few blue cards here. Is there any more at this time?
Uh, no, sir. Mayor.
Okay, thank you very much. And at this point in time, I have no one who wants to speak on the first public forum in my hand. Is there anybody in the audience who would like to speak on the first public forum? I don't know what she's saying.
Mayor, I believe.
Are we going to hear these on the item agenda? Is somebody who wants to speak on eight and 10, or do they want to, nine, or do they want to hear it when it's up? So is there a Consello Barnhill here? Thank you, sir. I thought you might speak on the agenda, but this is a good time to do it.
I was just going to say that I'll wait to speak on the individual items.
Yeah, that's what I thought you wanted to do. Brett, huh?
Should I do it right now?
These are on consent agenda, though. You have to speak right now, is what they're saying.
Yeah. Consello Barnhill III, North Las Vegas, say 92030. For, I wanted to speak upon the meeting minutes. I would like to ask that the city council extend the recommended time from three minutes to four minutes?
No, we'll have to go quick. We're way behind.
Okay, no, no, no. You guys could consider this later. I would just like to submit that comment. For the... to submit that comment. For the agenda item number eight, I was curious of, what are the terms for the deployment of our fire department to help with those situations? Would it just be big fires, or would it be small local fires, or would it be just during the time of when they're training over there? And then, also, I had a question upon item number 10. I, I was just wondering if you got, if you guys received any statistics on the, or I should say data on, upon the, the completion rate of, for offenders that are participating in the drug court, the success that you've guys seen, the curriculum patterns and stuff like that, the, the current modulation, because, I mean, I've, I've spent some time in the juvenile, and from my understanding, it, it's a decent program, but it still needs some, some parts where it could be further, better. So, yeah, that's what I wanted to know.
So, on eight, this is just to provide wildland fire training. So, we, it's just training, it's something happens that we can back up other organizations. And the other thing on number 10 is just a possible grant award for adult court. We don't have it yet, but we're building up the diversionary court right now. I think that's the right answer. Is that correct? Yes, that'll be your answer. Okay, sir?
If I recall properly, you, there is a couple, like either last month, you guys were willing to give the grant to, to one of the North Las Vegas Justice Courts to input that, that alternative program, if I'm remembering.
If you're interested in the court system, Renee, is that something that you understand a little bit what's going on? She, she handles our jail service, maybe she can meet with you privately and help answer some of those early questions. Would that be okay with you?
Yeah.
She's the director right there. Okay. Appreciate you coming down, and, oops, you made it. All right. So, with that, I, the chair will now take a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Are we getting the...
So... You're able to vote?
Items approved. Moving on to set future public hearing dates.
Item 16, set date on any appeals filed or required public hearings.
Thank you very much, Madam City Clerk. I direct you to set any hearing dates as necessary.
Mayor, so noted.
Moving on to public hearings. Item 17?
Yeah, Mayor, a note from the viewing audience, items number 17 and 18 were continued. Item 19, approve right-of-way franchise application with Zayo Group LLC for a franchise agreement to permit the construction, maintenance, and/or operation of telecommunications facilities within the city right-of-way.
Thank you, I heard that so long ago, and 17 and 18, it was like yesterday. I'm sorry, sorry about that. Do we have anybody who'd like to make a presentation on this? We'll open up the public comment, the public hearing, I mean, saying no one come forth, we'll close the public hearing. Is there a motion on the right-of-way franchise agreement? That would be Councilman, it's an at-large, anybody like to make that a motion?
Mayor, I'll make a motion to approve item number 19.
Thank you very much, you have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to council business.
Approve right-of-way franchise agreement with Zayo Group LLC for permission to construct, maintain, and/or operate telecommunications facilities within the city right-of-way.
Thank you. Is there a presentation for this at this time? I don't see one. The chair will call for a motion to approve this right-of-way franchise agreement that the city needs.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. Moving on to ordinances, final action.
Mayor, again, I'd just like to remind everyone that items number 21 and 22 were continued to June 16.
Moving on, ordinances, introduction only.
Mayor, Council, item 23, introduce ordinance number 3079, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 11.27 plus minus acres from a C2 general commercial district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 082021 CRMM, for property located at the northeast corner of Tropical Parkway and Christie Lane, and providing for other matters property related thereto. Item 24, introduce ordinance number 3080, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 4.76 plus minus acres from an OL open land district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 092021 Tropical Assembly 2.0, for property located at the southwest corner of Azure Avenue and Beasley Drive, and providing for other matters property related thereto. And ordinance 20, or, and item number 25, ordinance number, or introduce ordinance number 3081, an ordinance related to zoning, reclassifying approximately 42.7 plus minus acres from a C2 general commercial district to an M2 general industrial district, ZN 112021 Centennial I-15, for property located at the northwest corner of North Belt Road in Sloan Lane at Aliments, and providing for other matters property related thereto.
Thank you very much. Isaac, that's 67 acres in your area, something's happening on in two weeks. Good luck. Moving on to appointments. We're going to continue the at-large position for the Parks, Arts, and Recreation till the 6/16 meeting. So, I think, was it item 40, 27, are we ready for that one this evening?
Mayor, do you just want to take a vote on continuing the item?
What's that?
Take a vote on continuing the item?
Yeah, pardon me, let's vote on that, yeah. We don't have anybody to fill that position, good catch. My mistake. Items approved. Moving on.
Item number 27, appointment by Mayor Protem Barone of a citizen member to the Library District Board of Trustees to fill an unexpired term ending November 30, 2022.
Councilmember Barone.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, I'm going to go ahead and nominate a, a young father here in our community. Of course, you know, I try to do everything I can to incorporate the younger generation into our, our boards, and this is a young guy who, just a few years ago, never thought about family and the future, and what the future is going to hold, and now all of a sudden, he's got, he's a, a young family, and I know our Parks Director went ahead and talked to him already, and thought he'd be a good addition. And so, with that, I'd like to nominate Mr. Rico Melvin King to our Library Board, Board of Trustees. I'll say that back. I, I asked our, our Library Manager to talk to him, and he was impressed with him. He thought, Cass talked to the other person that I'll be appointing next. So, anyhow, Melvin King to Library Board.
Well, that's a good motion. We have a motion on the floor, please cast your vote. Items approved.
Item 28, appointment by Mayor Protem Barone of a citizen member to the Parks, Arts, Recreation, and Culture Advisory Board to fill an unexpired term ending November 30, 2022.
Councilmember Barone.
Just a few years ago, we saw, of course, right down the street and around the corner, we were able to make a substantial investment and get our little park, Jo Neep, our little neighborhood park, read on. And of course, we know, it's, it's seen some heavy use. And along with this theme here, we have one of the residents who lives here in Arrowhead Acres, who I've, she's been a longtime person who, kind of community-minded, and I asked her if she'd take this up and be my representative on the, on, on the parks and rec, and yes, Park Director Cass did talk to her and found her to be a, a good person, be a good candidate for this. So, I'd like to nominate Ms. Diana Ramirez to be, to be my representative on the Parks, Arts, Recreation, and Culture Advisory Board.
Thank you. We have a motion, please cast your vote. Items approved. City manager report?
Mayor and Council, nothing to report today.
Nothing to report. Moving on to the public forum here, I've got two people who would like to speak to us, Mr. Michael Estrada, if I'm saying that correctly. Michael, you here? Is that how you...
There's only one way to say it, Estrada. How you doing? My name is Michael Estrada, I live at 1025 Bluebird Hill Avenue. I'm a retired San Francisco firefighter, paramedic. I'm also a law, graduated from the Berkeley Law School, Law School. I want to talk about some legal issues regarding the city. I summoned the fire department. So, I summoned the fire department, it happened about two years ago. I was transported by two young firefighters. First of all, about myself, I have 27 years of actual fire experience, which is more than your current fire chief. I summoned 911 for a back spasm, and to make a long story short, the two firefighter paramedics that transported me lied on a legal document about the additional injuries that they caused me. Now, I made a complaint to the EMS Director and to Chief Calhoun, they claimed they did an investigation. There's cameras that captured all of this, they won't let me see the cameras. So, me and my law partner sent the letter to the city, and we basically want to meet with you to see what's going on, how we can settle this, because I just came from the chiropractor, and I'm still experiencing pain from one, when they caused me those injuries. And I have everything documented. Thank you for your time.
Well, we have a city attorney right here.
Well, I talked to him before, and he's not going to do anything.
No, that's her.
Oh, her. Well, I talked to one city attorney, and he didn't do anything.
Okay, yeah, I'm just saying, would, would you take a moment and visit with him and see what's going on with this, and then Rebecca can report?
Okay, appreciate that.
Thank you, Michael. Okay. Byron Watkins, Mr. Watkins, are you here?
It's Brian, it's Phil, I've gotten that all the way.
Okay.
Yeah, well, thank you for listening right now. On Michael Estrada's behalf, I'm his good, very good friend, we call each other cousins, we're not cousins, but we just say that. But on his behalf, when he told me of this situation, I helped him draft a letter to try to get their attention, to try to do it professionally and ethically. I was just taken aback, very gassed at how he was treated, because if you do the research of duty breach causation and damages, which is what happened to Mr. Estrada, which will come out, and in the medical field, the Hippocratic oath is do no harm. It's as simple as that. I mean, people make mistakes, we get it, but if you make a mistake, as we've all was taught growing up, I would think, own it. At least, at the, at the very least, you know, listen to what the complaint is and go from there, if you're in a professional environment. But being a country boy, growing up on a farm, being in the military, the conservation corps, being a former corrections officer for five years, you know, this is what I was taught, being also a former bodyguard, armed security, unarmed security. I was taught this throughout. So, I was very, just taken aback when I read and when he told me about what happened. So, you know, it made me angry, and as you can hear the monotone in Mr. Estrada's voice, you know, he's very upset. So, I just want to get this on the record, as a witness, as a very concerned individual, on top of that, and his back spasms, because what happened when he got lowered onto the curb, the gurney from the ground is slammed, and the force of that, especially at his body weight, is slammed to the point where his middle of his back right here is being treated. It just, to be blunt, it sucks. It just does. So, you know, he would greatly appreciate it if something is kind of pushed forward to get this going, because he's been doing the right thing on a professional level, and that's all I want to say about that. So, just want to thank you for your time.
Hey, Brian, appreciate you. Sorry I mispronounced your name there, too.
No, I've gotten that all the way.
Oh, no. Sir, are you moving up here to speak? I'd like to open it up. Oh, no, you're fine then. Okay, so I have no other blue cards here, so we're going to, this meeting is adjourned. You have a blue card. Didn't I call you up on the three items you wanted?
No, I spoke on the consent.
Well, come on up then, that'd be fine. I'm going to reopen the city council meeting for you. We're open again.
Consello Barnhill III, North Las Vegas. I would just like, before I get started on the main point, I would just like to invite the, the public and the, our, our staff to silently denounce the state legislator with me. They, they recently passed some anti-Second Amendment laws, targeting ghost guns. And while the Constitution doesn't necessarily say anything for the production of, the rights for productions of weapons, it is somewhat necessarily fundamental for the ability to bear arms, for the ability to build your own arms. And to the point, I'm, I'm kind of concerned with the, the acceptance of comorbid racial discrimination with ideological discrimination. The, there's, recently, the New Black Panthers have had a rally where they, where they denounce white people, you know, do the usual anti-white people thing. And it's, it's not a good trend in the, in the black community for us to do this, you know. If we're, if we're trying, if we're trying to support all these things of social justice and all this stuff, we must understand that it's not just the oppressed peoples, there's a whole society besides just oppressed people. If we, if we go behind these, these public trends, which are highly susceptible to manipulation by whoever controls media, then it, we're fundamentally just susceptible to misinformation and all these other things. I mean, we, we got instances of, of local Black Lives Matter doing, doing good stuff, like actually standing for people who are, who are killed by the police, you know, for that one guy that got killed in the, in the riot, in the protest last year. And it's really concerning, because, you know, you got Farrakhan going to these women marches, preaching antisemitism, you have the Critical Race Theory supporting the, the white adjacent of Asian Americans, and there's, there's multiple, there's multiple comorbid problems in the, in certain communities that have been completely neglected due to the philosophical principles behind it, you know, and the, the complete neglect of political discrimination and philosophical discrimination, or ideological. Thank you for your time. You guys have a good day.
Thank you very much, and I'll open up the public hearing one more time. Is there anybody else who would like to speak at this time? Stanley, welcome again.
This here is more, more on the political note. As I mentioned, I was released October 25, 1993, from Nellis Air Force Base, out of Pasadena. Did 16 months there, while Michael Milken did 17 months up in San Francisco. He was supposed to be at that prison there, but the warden denied him. He didn't want to deal with state wind. Nonetheless, as you know, 2018, California Legislature allowed ex-felons in California to vote. Big win. That means our vote counts just like anybody else's vote. 2019, Nevada followed soon. That means 86,000 of us, who could not vote before, who did not count, now count, moving forward. 6.1 million in California, 86,000 in California. Sir, I have formed the Ex Felon, CalNet Ex Felon Opportunity PAC. My job is addressing my 6.1 constituency, meaning constituencies in California, and my 86,000 constituencies here, and make sure they all understand the power of their collective vote and their collective spin. So, there is a formal pact in play, and we basically want to go ahead and let you know that we will be here to be fully behind your candidacy, as we seek support for those who want to do the right thing, and I believe you do want to do the right thing. I know Councilor Church will want us to do the right thing, Barone wants to do the right thing, and it's going. So, I think we should have a very good session here. So, after the session's over, I'd like to find out who your campaign manager is, and what are the things they need to be talking about, so we can go ahead and get this thing going the way it's supposed to go. Thank you.
Thank you, Stanley. That's a long ways away from now, but I understand. We're going to close public comment, and appreciate... We're going to close public comment and appreciate you all coming today. And looking forward to the next meeting in two weeks to see what happens with that Bobby Groan hour issue. Meeting's adjourned.